Welcome, everybody. We're having a special Board of Education meeting. I appreciate everybody for stopping by tonight. It is Wednesday, August 9, 2023. It is 5:37 PM. We are in the Nashua North Boardroom. I want to apologize for having my phone out. I forgot my iPad. I know it looks incredibly unprofessional, but this is how I have access to all of the documents that we have. So before we start off, I just want to read an announcement in regards to ETV. We appreciate local Comcast viewers. We appreciate local Comcast viewers for our meetings on Nashua ETV, which now broadcasts on Channel 22. Nashua ETV channel reassignment was effective as of yesterday. Comcast initiated the change, limiting the number of channels on its lineup. The links to Nashua ETV streaming service and broadcast schedule can continue to be found on the Nashua.edu homepage. Thank you. I finally remembered to do that. Okay. So now we go back to our meeting. Ms. Lambier, can you do the roll call, please?
Oh, sure. Ms. Darling is not here. Ms. Raymond?
Here.
Mr. Claffey is not here. Ms. Brown is not here. Ms. Oden?
Here.
I am here. Ms. Johnson?
Present.
Ms. Bishop?
Here.
And Ms. Chilio?
Here.
Okay.
Here.
Okay, we also have Dr. Andre. And I'm sorry, I don't know your name.
Michael Bous.
Oh, okay. All right then. And that would be it.
Thank you. All right. So tonight, we are meeting in regards to administrative nominations. So I would like to turn the floor over to Dr. Andre.
Thank you, and thank you for the board for holding this special meeting tonight. We do have only four recommendations tonight. We're pulling one due to a scheduling conflict, and that nomination will come at the end of the month. So everything is still looking good for that nomination, just we had a scheduling conflict. So first, I'd like to make a recommendation for Brenna Woods as the Assistant Principal at Birch Hill. So if Brenna could come down along with Tanya, if you want to sit across from us. And Brenna, if you could introduce yourself, a little background, why you applied at Nashua, and give us your drive.
Yeah. So my name is Brenna Woods. I grew up in Massachusetts, but have lived in Nashua, New Hampshire now for about 10 or so years. I was a elementary school teacher for those 10 years, actually down in Massachusetts. Did my elementary and early childhood education over in Arizona, and then came back here to do my educational leadership master's degree over at Bridgewater. And the reason that I applied to Nashua is because I live here, and I love the town that I live in, and want to give back to it in all the ways that I can, especially having children that are going to be going through the school system. So what better way to give back?
Any questions? Ms. Raymond?
I feel like you look that way. You're like, "Questions, not Heather."
No, I keep... It has been my request to sit over there, and then I can see everybody. But I think just I naturally... Because anyway.
That's fine. Welcome, welcome. I am so excited. I live down the street from Birch Hill. My kids went to Birch Hill. I'm excited about all the upgrades that are happening at Birch Hill, and I'm really excited that you've decided to jump in right in the middle of a major renovation, which is a challenge. So my question, and I ask all of the elementary assistant principals this, is about your disciplinary philosophy when it comes to the elementary-age kids, because there's a vast developmental difference between our little five-year-olds in kindergarten and our 10- or 11-year-olds in fifth grade. So can you speak to that a little bit?
Yes. So first and foremost, when looking at disciplinary actions, the first thing to remember is that these are little children in front of us. These are human beings who have real emotions and real reactions to real things. If there's behaviors that we're seeing, we want to get to the root of what that problem is, and then tier that disciplinary action based on what it is that that child needs in that moment. So if a five-year-old is showing significant behaviors, you know, why is that happening? What can we do to best support them? So I think it's getting to know the whole child and understanding what it is that they need in that moment, and following all the protocols that keeps everyone safe.
Quick follow-up. What is your... What is your plan for involving parents? At what point do you involve a parent when a child is having a behavioral need at school? And how do you go about, you know, having that parent engagement, even in those circumstances where kids are doing great?
Well, first, I would be having conversations with Tanya about what it is that these conversations have looked like in the past, what has worked, what has not worked, and then move from there. I think when working with parents, the thing to know is that, you know, you're working with their little one or their, you know, 10-, 11-year-old, not so little. And recognizing that parenting can be really vulnerable. And it's really important that when you're bringing them in for conversations, whether it be good or bad, to recognize that, like, you're talking about something that is really precious to them, making sure that they are aware that you and them are on the same team with the same goal of making sure that a child is successful. So I think developing that from the start is the best way to kind of have those types of tricky conversations. In terms of bringing them in, I think it would be kind of a case-by-case basis that I would be talking with Tanya about as we go. Obviously, in the cases of safety or, you know, repeat problems, those would be things to definitely bring them in and kind of create a game plan, but kind of case-by-case basis in communication with Tanya.
Great. Thank you so much, and welcome to the neighborhood. Any other questions? Ms. Oden?
Thank you. I really don't have a question, but I was lucky enough to be on the interview team with the Birch Hill staff. And they all felt good about you coming, and I think you'll fit in real well there. I think Tanya chose wisely, and I think you'll be a strong team. Thank you.
Thank you.
So I also had the pleasure of interviewing you in a smaller, more informal kind of conversation. And I think we probably talked for close to an hour, maybe an hour and a half. So I just thoroughly enjoyed your philosophy, our conversation, you pushing my thinking and our team's thinking. So I'm really looking forward to having you part of the administrative team. So I think we're going to do wonderful things, and you're ingredients with Tanya. So that being said, if I could make the recommendation to elect Brenna Woods as the Assistant Principal at Birch Hill Elementary School for the 23-24 school year at a salary of $79,375.
I'll make that motion.
A second. Thank you, Ms. Chilio. Thank you, Ms. Raymond. Any comments or questions? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Welcome to the team.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
So next, if I can call down Sarah Kajet and Jackie Okunak for the administrative team at Mount Pleasant Elementary School. So same thing, Sarah. If you could give us a little background, you know, we had wonderful experience of having you at Penachuk over the number of years and being an incredible instructional leader there. But if you can just give us a little bit about your background, why you want to be an assistant principal, I appreciate it.
Certainly. So I'm Sarah Kawett. I have been in education for the last 10 years or so, been Title I worker over in Manchester for a few years, then went to Ware's fifth grade, and then recently, for the last five years, I was at Penachuk teaching sixth grade as well as being the English Department Curriculum Liaison. Why I want to go to administration is I really love to learn and grow, and I think it's a good opportunity for me to continue on with my career and work with some other teachers and teach them how to be better and move on and improve, as well as help me grow as well as an educator.
Any questions? Ms. Raymond?
Thank you. So I kind of gave it away already. I wanted to ask about your discipline philosophy. And in your case, what made you change... What made you decide that you wanted to change from middle school to go down to elementary school? And then how will you kind of change your thoughts on discipline? Or, I don't know, enhance your thoughts on discipline when dealing with a younger set of kids?
Absolutely. Well, I went into education for... My study was elementary. It just so happened the positions I was able to get were fifth and sixth grade, which I have enjoyed thoroughly. But so for me, it's... I also have young children, so I have the wonderful joy of being around young kids during the day, anyway. So my philosophy on discipline is more to be kind, but firm and consistent. I like, as a teacher, I like to teach them, as well as to why they can't do what it is that they're doing wrong, and explain to them what the problems are. Definitely bring in parents as needed, depending on the case-by-case. So I believe good communication all around with teachers and the children and the parents is a great way of communicating all of that.
Any other questions?
Can I ask one more? So just, we have this, you know, agreement with the Department of Justice, and we've rolled out a new ELL curriculum. And one thing that we've learned, especially at the most recent board meetings, is that there's a significant population of English language learners at Mount Pleasant. And I wondered if you could just speak to your experience with that population and any thoughts you have on making sure that we're engaged to the best of our abilities?
Absolutely. So I do have... There has been some of that population both in Manchester as well as at Penachuk. Depending on where they are in their ELL studies, it can be a little bit of a challenge to communicate thoroughly with those children. And it's just really important to continue to try to engage them as much as possible through programming and different curriculum aspects. For me, only on my own personal growth is I do wish to go back to school and get my... Learn some Spanish, because I think that would be a much better gap closer to try to do that as well. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Not seeing any. So again, I'd like to make a recommendation to elect Sarah Kawett, right? Just want to be... As Assistant Principal at Mount Pleasant Elementary School for the 23-24 school year at a salary of $79,375.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Ms. Chilio.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Oden. Any other comments or questions? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes, and welcome to your new home.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
So we... I'll be asking just to remove the next recommendation, number three. But you can see where the district is heading with that person. We just haven't had our final interview. So we had a miscommunication on who was on vacation and someone being out of town. But we're moving in the right direction there. So we'll be making that recommendation at the end of the month. So the last recommendation, recommendation number four, is to... Recommendation to elect Michael Bous as the Human Resource Director as an interim for the 23-24 school year at a salary of $85,000. And Mike is with us, so if he can give us a little background, the work that you've been doing in the last couple of years, and I can say a little more when he's finished.
Yeah, so I've been... I came to Nashua right at... Actually, in the middle of COVID, about 2021, early 2021. I've been through several HR directors. I've learned a ton from the HR directors of past. And we're really looking forward to moving HR into a direction of more communication, more openness, and really just kind of trying to get staffed and making sure that all the teachers are... Or sorry, all the children have somebody in front of the classroom ready to go for the start of the school year. Just looking at, again, cleaning up some processes that we're... Been in process for the last couple of years, just haven't had the leadership, really, to kind of push through it fully and complete the projects and tasks that we have. So I'm looking forward to taking... Picking up where they left off and moving the HR department in the right direction.
Thank you. Any questions?
Oh, I have like 11 billion questions. But...
As do I, actually.
But I know Mr. Bous. I've worked with Mr. Bous a couple times over the last few years because of the turnover that we've had in that department. And I think Mr. Bous has been a steadying influence. And I'm really, really excited that you've decided to step up and take on more. So yay. That's it. I'm not gonna...
So if I can just say a little bit, Mike, as you alluded to, so Mike has stepped up really big the last two years. I think the last two summers that we've been vacant as HR director, like during our busiest season. And Mike has been the backbone of the department, really overseeing a lot of processes, procedures. So he knows how the department operates. He sees what can be improved, what's kind of muda, some of the things that need to kind of go away. And we've been having conversations over the last year. Mike is probably in my office three or four times a day, asking questions. So he has that intellectual curiosity on how to expand. We also talk about how HR needs to help us set an organizational culture. What are we doing to recruit and retain our teachers? And so HR that we envision is more about, again, that retention in that culture of the building, as opposed to it's just an office that we... It's a paper mill generator. It needs to be more than that. We are in the people business, whether it's our onboarding, it's our retention. As Mike said, it's really important that we have adults, high-quality adults, in front of every student. And so HR needs to be more than that. So we've been having a lot of conversations on what does that look like moving forward? And Mike's... Some of Mike's professional growth goals are, again, looking at HR of the future as opposed to just processes. So I'm really looking forward to partnering with him and as, again, as he grows into this position. So I think it gives us a good foundation moving forward.
One of my questions is, I think... I think one of the things that we've talked about a lot within the district is just adding more diversity to match our student populations. And I know we've had conversations before about how do we create a less homogeneous kind of staffing situation when we live in a very homogeneous area? So what are some of your hopes and goals about adding more diversity to our staffing? And how do you think we can reach out and grab more of those exceptional teachers that we just don't have access to in this part of the country?
Yeah, so I think it really stems from coming from the source. So really, it's going to the principals and other teachers and figuring out, hey, where do you look for jobs? Maybe we're using old job posting websites where we shouldn't be posting on there. So I really want to assess, you know, maybe this website's better than this website, or I'm very open to new ideas. So if we're not on a website, and a lot of the teachers say, hey, when I graduated, or hey, this is where I go to look, I'm going to look at that, and I'm going to say, hey, maybe we should be posting here instead, to try to get different avenues, different people. Because right now, where we're posting, obviously, you know, we have all these vacancies. It's not that it's not working, but we're not pulling in the candidates that we are looking for. And that is really it, getting it out more to different aspects. I worked a lot with the old Special Ed Director on getting a different posting for Special Ed. We worked that, we got a contract, and now we're going to be posting with Sped Exchange. So that is another avenue to try to get special educators... Increase our special educator presence in the district. So avenues like that are... I'm going to try to use to increase our diversity.
So if I can just add, Mike and I had a conversation this afternoon. We were actually on a vendor call with a recruiting agency of how they possibly could help us. But we were also... So one of Mike's projects coming up is, like, what is the cost of losing a first- or second-year teacher? Right? And then hiring somebody else? So like, what's the dollar amount? If we put in X, Y, and Z amount of professional development for that person, it's costing the district X. And when they resign, we lose that not only knowledge, but also that expense, right? Or the investment, that's a better word. So we're actually looking at that, because in our budget, we don't have a huge HR budget for recruitment. And so if we say it costs us X amount of dollars, is it better off to rein... To invest somewhere else in better recruiting mechanisms or invest in LinkedIn differently? So we've been having that conversation. So that's our task of how much money is actually... Are we losing in our retention? And can that money be better suited in our recruitment? And do we recruit differently so that we can address diversity? We can expand our web where people are looking? So again, I think that's where we're kind of looking to the future, as opposed to we only post here, or we only go to regional, you know, job fairs. So we're trying to expand that web.
Thank you. All right. Dottie?
I mean, Ms. Oden?
Yes.
Thank you. Have we thought anything about a finder's fee? Sometimes you can make connections with other people. And what I... What I tend to see in Nashville, once people come here, they like to stay here, they get connected, there's a teamwork. Have we ever thought about a finder's fee?
Not to my knowledge, but those are the strategies that we might be looking at, you know? So just how do you recruit somebody? And I mean, the company we were looking at is if, you know, if they worked and that person stayed or left within a year, then there was no finder's fee. But if the person stayed for a number of years, then you get the compensation for it. So different types of structures.
Thank you. I have one more question. I've been on the board 14 years. It goes back to the early '90s. But when I get down there, you have a very young crew. Do you have... Are you fully staffed in that department?
Good question. So I would need to find a replacement for myself as a manager, which I am looking to find somebody with a lot of HR experience so that they can help out and kind of fill in right away where I left off.
And that's the only position that's not filled at this point?
That is currently the only position, yep.
Thank you.
That's a good problem to have.
Yeah.
All right. So Dr. Andre?
So again, like to make a recommendation to elect Michael Bous as a Human Resource Director interim for the 23-24 school year at a salary of $85,000.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Ms. Chilio.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Oden. Any comments or questions? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Welcome into, I'm going to guess, a new office.
Thank you.
Could I ask one question just before you leave? Are we doing anything with the... Are we having any kind of job fairs here upcoming soon that people should know about?
So I'm working on putting together a virtual job fair. I'm hoping the virtual aspect, over the past couple of years, the one that we've had over the summer, we haven't had great turnout on. So we're trying to find, again, I think, outside the box and do a virtual job fair. So I hope to have more info on that by the end of this week.
That sounds great. Thank you.
Cool. Thank you.
We'll also be using the back-to-school as a recruitment. So as parents are coming and community comes out, hopefully, we can find a couple more power educators or crossing guides or any... Anything. So be on the lookout. There's probably... We're thinking about a QR code that would get us into our application right on the spot.
That sounds great.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Do we vote?
Thank you. And it looks like we have one more?
And one more. I didn't scroll down far enough. So we have one more recommendation. So if I can have Danielle Bouton and Mr. Chopra come to the horseshoe?
Hot mic. Makes her very sensitive. But that's okay. You said something good.
So I will be making a recommendation for Danielle Bouton as the Assistant Director of ELL. So Danielle, if you can give us a little background of your experience in Nashua and what brings you to the position. Appreciate it.
Certainly. So I'm a New Hampshire girl through and through, raised in Salem, and then went through the UNH system for my undergrad and graduate degree. And then from there, was able to get a job here in Nashua as a continuing sub and over at Led Street as an ELL teacher. And I've been there for the past 14 years. I love it. This is my community. So when this opportunity came to be available, I knew it was something that I was certainly interested in. This past year, I worked as an ELL coach. So I taught halftime at Led Street and then also coached for the district. So I feel like I got a good taste of what's to come.
Before a question... Can I just... If I can ask Mr. Chopra, because they're... My experience, they've been like office mates and working hand-in-hand. Because they're, my experience, they've been like office mates and working hand-in-hand. So if you can add a little bit about Danielle's quality of professional skills, her intellectual knowledge. I mean, she's wonderful having at Led Street, so I can't say enough. But I left Bob.
Yeah, so I think Danielle sold herself a little bit short and glossing over her work this year as a coach. She really was almost working in the capacity of Assistant Director and supporting me with all of the responsibilities that the department has toward testing and just supporting teachers, our own ELL teachers and mainstream teachers. She just was an unbelievable asset. And really, the ELL teachers came to rely on her in such a huge way. And we, I mean, I'm just absolutely thrilled to have her support in this role.
Questions? Ms. Raymond?
Just, I feel like if people come all the way down here at night, we should give them respect of, you know, asking a couple of questions, letting them introduce themselves to the community. My first one is actually a comment, and I said this yesterday in the interview team. I don't see on your resume where you put your award for Teacher of the Year in New Hampshire from 2021, which was a remarkable achievement, especially for ELL teacher. And I would, if I were you, put it in like glitter and sparkles on the top line. So having gotten that out there in the public and announced it loudly to the interview team yesterday. I wanted to have you speak briefly about the Department of Justice settlement and your views on that. You spoke very eloquently in the interview about, first of all, your intense knowledge of this, this document that's like 17 pages long, and you know it better than anybody I know. But you talked yesterday about viewing it kind of as an opportunity, and I wanted you to kind of share that with the board, because I thought it was so important. And I think it, it left an impression on me, so.
Certainly. So I think sometimes when we see a settlement like the Department of Justice, it just seems unwieldy. But really, when we stop and think about it in its parts, there's just a lot of, as Heather said, a lot of opportunity within it. So it just helps to remind us what's important for our students and help us to continue to have an asset mindset as we move forward. So just some of the stuff around interpretation and translation and making sure that our parents have people there to help them to communicate with our schools, being sure that everything that we send home, they're a critical partner in the work that we do. The focus on data at the end of it, at the end of the report, rather, helping just to remind us that as we make our instructional choices, that they really, we need to be looking at our assessment data to help us to continue the path forward and to make informed decisions. And then even just things like the service minutes. It's one of the first times that we've really gotten clear guidance on how much support an English learner should have within their school day. And so from a programming and modeling standpoint, that really helps us to, to help to kind of figure out what is the objective and what is our goal? And how are we going to get there within the time that we're allotted? So I think that it's brought up a lot of great conversation. And it's helped us as a district, I think, as we're making big decisions and looking forward, to really think of ELL from the beginning in each step of those decisions, rather than an afterthought, which I think is really, really critical for our students.
Just the other question that I had for you is, I know that our teachers have been feeling pulled in a lot of different directions over the last few years, especially coming off of COVID. And then we have this DOJ settlement, and we have increasing numbers of kids who have special education designations, in addition to increasing number of students who English is not their first language. And so I wondered if you could speak a little bit about how you envision this role being a support for teachers?
Yeah, absolutely. So I think a lot of it starts with our systems and structures as a district, and that's something that we can help to put in place in supporting our ELL teachers and then also our mainstream teachers as well. Because sometimes I think we get bogged down in some of the like mundane work. And so if that is better laid out and is easier to accomplish, then we'll have more energy for our students, the things that are important, or people that are important, rather. So I think even in my role as a coach this year, having the opportunity to really get into classrooms and get a sense of the curricula that we have, and then what supports are already in place by those publishers, but then what do we need to enhance as we move forward? And then working together in teams in a collaborative way to continue to build upon that, I think is crucial. I think it really comes down to just supporting each other and being okay to like ask questions and, you know, have wonderings.
Ms. Gilio?
Hi. I had the pleasure of working with Danielle for about a half a school year when I was at Led Street. And her dedication and passion to the ELL population and to the other staff is just outstanding. And I'm so happy to see her here tonight for this hiring.
Thank you.
Ms. Oden?
I just want to say congratulations. I think out of all the teachers in the district, I have seen your name, and I didn't put it with a face until tonight. I didn't know why you were here, because your name's not on this, but congratulations. Really happy for you, and I'm happy for the district. And Mr. Chopra, I'm sure, is thrilled. But I know that the Led Street community is going to miss you. You have been a very, very strong supporter of that community, and you've, you've worked very hard there. So thank you so much. And I wish both of you the best of luck this year, because you certainly, all teachers have a challenging job, but I think your job, especially with the Department of Justice, you kind of like feel like you're under a microscope. And congratulations and best of luck. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments? I'll give the floor back to Dr. Andre.
I'm not seeing any. I'd like to make a recommendation to elect Danielle Booton as the Assistant Director of ELL for the 23-24 school year at a salary of $82,500. You have my notes.
Yes, I still do.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Thank you, Ms. Gilio. Thank you, Ms. Oden. Any other comments or questions? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
Yay. And that is it for your recommendations. Ms. Raymond?
I'm just, I wondered if we expect to have a special meeting for teacher vacancies?
So by the policy, so just for clarification, by the policy, I've been appointing. And so at the end of the month, we would get all those names. So unless we feel there's a need for a special meeting. But we've been following the policy that was started last year.
Is that streamlining the process so that we're able to hire more efficiently and we don't lose teachers to other districts?
Absolutely.
I think that's just my biggest worry is, I, you know, as we click down.
Yep.
Yeah, I have a, probably a 15 to 20 list of teachers right now that are ready to come for the 21 board.
Okay. Excellent.
Okay, I feel better. Thank you.
So with that said, I am looking for a.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Excellent. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. We are now adjourned at 6:09 PM.